Good morning. Good morning, and I'd like to begin the October 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Here.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valdez?
Present.
Chairman Elias?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
We have Pastor Gilbert Garcia from Sun Life Church, from Sun Life Chapel, excuse me, should be here to give our invocation. Pastor Garcia, are you here? I don't see anybody. Okay. Well, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and ask everybody to please rise, and we'll have a moment of silence, and then we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Supervisor Bronson today.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the great being of God.
Okay, thank you very much. We have pause for pause. And we have the pet yenta, Kristin Ahbach here. She is the ultimate matchmaker for pets here in town, so that's why she's become the pet yenta. And this is Canela. We gave her that name even though we had a dog here a couple months ago with the same name. But we gave her that name just because of her beautiful coat, and she's just a very sweet little animal, so. Kristin, please.
Thank you Chairman Elias, members of the board, Mr. Huckleberry. Good morning, everyone. My name is Kristin Ahbach. I'm the Director of PAC, and I am here today with one of our amazing Animal Protection and Enforcement Officers, Officer Robledo, who's going to tell you a little bit about Canela.
I'm Officer Robledo from Pima Animal Care Center, and today we brought this special guest, Canela. We don't know too much about her history at this point, but she's definitely up for adoption. We believe she was already got a foster today. But nevertheless, we have been like that for adoption right now.
She's about three months old, and she's looking for a home along with 750 other animals currently at PAC, so please come and see us. We have about 400 dogs on site and about 300 cats on any given day, and we can find any type, age, breed, or size you're looking for at Pima Animal Care Center. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kristin. Appreciate it. Yeah, please be generous and think about adopting or fostering a pet from our Animal Care Center. It's absolutely critical, and they're all really nice pets over there, and so. Okay, I don't see that we have any changes for the agenda today, so we're going to continue on with our proclamations and presentations. We have one as item five, Return of the Gila Top Minnow Month, and so.
I'll move the item.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. I'm going to do this presentation, so if the folks that are here to receive it, please come forward.
I'm surprised you're here after yesterday's event.
Okay, what a big effort we've had in the past 15 years, really, but we've changed the culture of the county in terms of how we deal with Santa Cruz River, and how we deal with wastewater, and we've made some remarkable changes. I would suggest to all of you that any of you who don't understand that the Santa Cruz River is the lifeblood of our entire region, that you're really missing the boat. It's absolutely critical, so the better we treat a river, the higher quality of effluent that goes back in the river, the more plant life and animal life that we see in the water, we're absolutely heading in the right direction. So, I'm very proud to actually do this presentation today. Whereas the Pima County Board of Supervisors invested over 600 million to upgrade Pima County's two primary wastewater reclamation facilities, thereby dramatically improving the quality of recycled water released to the Santa Cruz River. And whereas the reach of the Santa Cruz River, supported by recycled water from northwest Tucson to the town of Marana, is now Pima County's premier wetland ecosystem, sustaining year-round flows that provide habitat for native species, public enjoyment, and educational opportunities. And whereas the Pima County Regional Flood Control District, Regional Wastewater Reclamation Department, Office of Sustainability and Conservation, and the Sonoran Institute, there are a lot of syllables in those names, huh? Have partnered to report on improving conditions in the Santa Cruz River as highlighted in five annual reports covering water years 2013 to 2017. And whereas the Pima County Natural Resources Parks and Recreation Department has used the annual reports to teach thousands of schoolchildren about the improving conditions of the Santa Cruz River in the annual The Living River of Words, Art, and Poetry Contest. Whereas in 2017, a research team led by the Sonoran Institute made an exciting discovery, the presence of the native endangered Gila top minnow, marking the first time the species has been documented in the lower Santa Cruz River in 70 years. Yeah, we should give a round of applause just for that period. That's absolutely critical. Amazing comeback. Whereas Pima County and its partners will be hosting community events in October 2018 to inform the community about their findings and release the report entitled A Living River: Charting the Santa Cruz River Conditions Northwest Tucson to Marana 2017 Water Year, which highlights the return of the Gila top minnow. And whereas residents of Pima County are invited to see the Gila top minnow at the Tucson Meet Yourself Festival at the Pima County Library, displayed in the Regional Flood Control District exhibit, and at the Living River Loop Event on Sunday, October 14, 2018, between 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of October 2018 to be Return of the Gila Top Minnow Month, passed and adopted the second day of October 2018. So, does anybody want to make a few comments? Anybody? Sonoran Institute?
Sure.
Ian, all right.
Please. Well, I do just want to say it is a wonderful accomplishment and a tribute to the, a testament to the partnership that we've enjoyed with Pima County over the last several years. It's an amazing thing that this fish is back in this stretch of the river, and it's something that for all of Tucson to celebrate. And thank you all for your partnership and for the great accomplishment.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, that's okay. All right, let's take the picture. All right, our next item is on the addendum, item number one, Mental Illness Awareness Week.
I'll move the item.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation regarding Mental Illness Awareness Week. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you for being here Laura Fairbanks, Laura Hagan Fairbanks, one of our former employees, but absolutely strong community member, who's always out there working for the better of all of us. Supervisor Bronson's going to make this presentation, and so Supervisor Bronson, please.
And I'm pleased to present this proclamation, and I think Laura has directly experienced some of this through family. And if we look at who are in our jail population, many of them are people with behavioral health issues, and the jail is our largest mental health facility in Pima County. We got to reverse that trend. So, whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Southern Arizona works to support people with mental illness and their loved ones, and whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Southern Arizona works to educate the public about mental illness and to end the stigma associated with it that often prevents affected people and their family members from seeking treatment. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, resulting in 45,000 deaths per year, and the second leading cause of death for those aged 10 to 34. And whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Southern Arizona sponsors the Ending the Silence Program, which discusses mental illness in schools and youth programs around Pima County. And whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Southern Arizona will host a candlelight vigil on mental illness recovery and understanding on Tuesday, October 9, 2018, at Reed Park Cancer Survivors Plaza at 6:00 PM. And whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Southern Arizona will partner with the Loft Cinema on Wednesday, October 10, 2018, at 7:00 PM to screen The S Word, a documentary focusing on suicide survivors and the families of victims. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of October 7 through 13, 2018, to be Mental Illness Awareness Week, and encourages county residents to participate in these Mental Illness Awareness Week activities to increase understanding of mental illness, to end the stigma associated with mental illness, and to learn that living in recovery can be rewarded, rewarding, passed and adopted the second day of October 2018. Laura, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you.
The National Alliance on Mental Illness of Southern Arizona invites all of you and the entire community to these events in the upcoming week. Mental illness affects almost everybody in this nation, either directly or through family members or other loved ones. Living in recovery is possible. Many people don't understand that. Just because you have a mental illness does not mean that you can't live a full and rewarding life. I urge all of you to participate in these events, and I thank you very much Supervisor Bronson.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate you being here, and we're going to move on to a call to the audience. We have quite a few speaker cards that have been submitted, so please I'd ask people to stick to the three-minute rule, and that's it. And I'll be strict on enforcing that again today. And I would ask people not to be repetitive, but we appreciate all of you spending your time here with us and making comments on the issues that come before the board. Very good. Thank you. Our first speaker's going to be Roger Score. Mr. Score, if you'd please come forward, give us your name for the record. You have three minutes, and thank you very much for being here, sir.
Thank you. My name's Roger Score. And members of the board, Dick. I'm here to address what you're actually accomplishing. You've been up here for many years. And Pima County now is the highest taxed county in the whole state. We are also the poorest county. And that trend continues. You always want more of our money. I heard a lady up here last week, she said, "This isn't our land. It's someone else's land." Well, I paid money for my house, my property, my land. I have a deed that says I own it. But you, you like to tax me every month I pay rent to the county. Basically, I paid for a house that the county owns and charges me rent on. You look at everything going on across the country, from the push for open borders to increase taxes on us. It's chaos. You're not here to defend the American people. You're here to attack us, to destroy our culture, to destroy our economy. Why would you want to increase taxes and pull in more money here and hurt our economy and create open borders? The reason for that is California's turned into a literal shithole that nobody wants to live in.
Mr. Score, please do not use any vulgarities while you're addressing the board. Thank you.
I grew up on a farm.
That's fine, sir.
To me, that word is money in the pocket. You probably never worked a day in your life, but so what you want to do is drive those people back to California. Because people are fleeing California for Texas, Arizona, states where people can have more liberties, have lower taxes, and to prevent them all from running and leaving that stinkhole. What you're doing is making life so miserable here with open borders, crime, denying our sheriff money, and increasing our taxes, that people are starting to leave Pima County. I know I sold my big house and bought a little house to decrease my taxes, because otherwise Huckleberry wants his check every month. You're not allowed to live here freely. The only people that are allowed to live here freely are the people sleeping out in the Veterans Memorial up front in the building. They can freely roam wherever they want. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Score. Our next speaker's going to be Jerry Otobani. Ms. Otobani, if you'd please come forward and give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes. Again, thank you for spending your time here with us today.
Good morning Chairman Elias and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jerry Otobani, and I live in Oro Valley. Well, Mr. Huckleberry, I have seen your picture all over town, and it's a pretty good picture, too. For over a decade, at least 11 to 14 years, you three have voted yes on Stone Garden. It hasn't changed, but you Elias, Valdez, and Bronson voted no, and not to keep us safe. So now you want to pass a bond number 463. And you want, excuse me. And the statute 3.0607 states that you can change it. What needs to happen is the HER funds, that are supposed to go directly to road repair, where it's supposed to, where the state, well, for years. For 20 years, you've been taking that money and spending it elsewhere. So, there's something that needs to be done, because that's supposed to go to road repair. So we need to go up to the State Senate and have somebody put some kind of amendment into the statute that the money only goes to the roads, to repair them. So you have a Transportation Department that used to, years ago, actually had a department that could fix roads. So now in the Transportation Department, I kind of wonder what they do. I think they actually just take our money, and I don't know, sit and drink coffee with it, who knows? Look at Mr. Huckleberry's cronies in that booklet, that pamphlet, they're the ones that are voting yes on the bonds. So that's kind of interesting. Mr. Huckleberry had 250,000 to Banner Hospital, no money for the roads. And then there was 8 million, I think that was 250 million. 8,750,000 went to that keynote thing down at the bottom of the road, either freeway, but no money for the roads. And then you buy a golf course for 100,000, no money for the roads. And then you buy a bowling alley, no money for the roads. So you keep raising our taxes with the highest taxes in the whole state of Arizona. So, many, many seniors and families, like he said, had to get a smaller house, are actually losing their houses because you're overtaxing them. So let me see what else here. And, oh, that's it. So what I wanted to say was.
You've completed your three minutes, Jerry. Thank you very much for coming here today.
People need to read the pamphlet on the no as well, because they'll learn a lot from the no.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker's going to be Christopher Cole. Mr. Cole, if you'd please come forward, and you have three minutes, sir. Please give us your name for the record, and appreciate you spending your time here with us once again.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Christopher Cole. I think maybe there's somebody here that doesn't already know that. And I'm Chair of the Pima County Libertarian Party. And all of the advertisements I've been seeing recently, most have been, at least it seems like most, have been political advertisements. Vote for me, my opponent is a liar. Vote for or against this proposition, the other side's a liar. But in all of those, I've seen one advertising campaign that fascinates me. A pizza company is going to start repairing roads. Pima County could repair roads, but how many millions of dollars did you spend down there with worldview? You could have done more for the economic impact of Pima County by randomly selecting 10,000 poor people and handing them a check for $100,000 each. You spend how many millions of dollars getting I-11 built, even though ostensibly you disapprove of I-11? We know the voters in Pima County don't want I-11. We know the people in Avra Valley don't want I-11. But Mr. Huckleberry is spending how many millions of dollars getting the state to build I-11? Who wants it? Well, Mr. Huckleberry does. Mr. Diamond does. And you spend millions of dollars grabbing land like some medieval Norman, grabbing land wherever they can. The land that's now known as Normandy, England, Sicily, I think they tried to grab Spain as well. 10% of Pima County approximately is privately owned. You keep grabbing land. Are you going to stop grabbing land before you own everything in Pima County? And we all just have to pay rent to you in lieu of property taxes? Stop with worldview, stop with I-11, stop buying land. Fix the roads. The roads are your number one priority, aren't they? Isn't that what the state has said? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Our next speaker is going to be Keith Van Heineken. Mr. Van Heineken, if you'd come forward, please, and you have three minutes, sir. I appreciate you spending your time here, as always.
Good morning, Pima County, and all assembled. I'm Roger Score, speaking for Keith Van Heineken. I have no idea what I'm going to be saying, but it'll be good. We've got trouble right here in Pima County. We have Chuck Huckleberry ramming a $460 million bond. At the same time, Mayor Rothschild crams a $225 million bond, Google, down our throats. Well, 685 million isn't a billion at least. By my educated analysis, that's one quarter of what is needed over the next 20 years. That is the proof of local Democrat-controlled planned failure since the 1970s. Some say we look like a third-world feces hole, by the way. Southern Arizona has been turned into a drug and illegal alien invasion route that also supports child sex trafficking. We can thank people like Sheriff Dubnik, Barbara Lawal, Raul Grovva, Richard Elias, Isabel Garcia, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, not to forget our complicit mainstream media. Here that think Fitzsimmons and Comsky are actual intellectuals. Don't worry, those pesky Republicans will move away and be replaced by Californians. So Chuck Huckleberry, how about you fire 1,000 of your close-ass personal friends and pay for the road repairs with the savings of $100 million per year? Don't worry, Chuck doesn't have any friends in the Sheriff's Fire Department. As Roe versus Wade was created out of a woman's lie, Democrats perverse need to be destroyed, to destroy society. Now we have a woman and a Democrat Party trying to destroy rule of the law and the presumption of innocence. Abortion has murdered 60 million Americans in 45 short years. Talk about a mental health problem. Only the plague of war.
Your time has expired, sir. I appreciate you coming here and making your comments today. And I would also apologize to the audience again for another vulgarity that came out during the course of Mr. Van Heineken's discussion.
Is feces a vulgarity?
Excuse me, sir?
Is feces a bad word?
Please, you need to sit down, get yourself in order. Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. Our next speaker's going to be Karen Kansfield. Ms. Kansfield, if you'd come forward, please, and give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes. And thank you very much for spending your time here with us.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Karen Kansfield. I'm a resident of Pima County. I was disappointed in the recent vote by this board to terminate the $1.4 million border security grant that Pima County has received for more than a decade. I am especially frustrated by the disparaging comments about our valiant law enforcement members by some of you. Your votes to terminate this grant comes at the expense of public safety and jeopardizes the brave efforts of our deputies to protect us. Please vote yes for Addendum 4, and enable the Pima County Sheriff to secure funds to support its honorable work to protect our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Our next speaker's going to be Kathy Morrow. Kathy, if you'd please come forward. Kathy Morrow, oh, there you are. Thank you for coming here again, and please give us your name for the record, and you have three moments, three minutes.
My name's Kathy Morrow, and I'm here with, on behalf of the Felicia Shue Domestic Violence Group. And I'm speaking for someone else that wasn't able to show up. Her name's Rosemary. And she wrote, "I wanted to tell you that I connected with my real..." And she wrote, "I wanted to tell you that I connected with my real..." "Pima County has an opportunity to be creative in improving the economic viability of the area around Oracle Road and Miracle Mile. The property of the county recently purchased, which includes Golden Pins Bowling Alley, has the potential to become a center for health and well-being. Probation offices and public health clinics are necessary, but their work would be stronger if the center includes input from the community. The bowling alley has brought money into Pima County through turnarounds. The bowling alley needs to be preserved and to be part of a community center which provides recreation, a cooling station, and a new construction for other offices Pima County needs in this part of town. Rosemary Bolsa."
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
I would remind everybody in the audience to please turn off their cell phones. It's important to show respect to everybody else in the room, so if everybody could please take a moment to check and make sure that their cellphone is turned to silent. Our next speaker is going to be Mickey Nemi. Mickey, come on up here, District Five resident, Elvira neighborhood, my friend. Thank you for being here today. I know you always have something interesting to say, Mickey, so give us three minutes. And again, I appreciate you spending your time here with us today.
Good morning, Board. My name is Mickey Nemi and as Richard said, I'm from District Five and Elvira neighborhood. And I would like to invite you to our night out on Halloween.
All right. I'd be glad to be there.
Six o'clock to eight o'clock. You know what it is?
You want to make that good green chili you make?
Yes.
Ha ha.
Okay. What I'd like to say is about the Stone Garden for the Sheriff Department. I found some questions and one says, "What's the role of the sheriff in the Stone Garden?" And he's supposed to be the Chairman of the Operator of Stone Garden Integrated Planning Teams. He is required to submit orders and budget. Then he participated in law enforcement agencies throughout the state and what other costs, what type of costs are allowed? Overtime, fringe benefits. This is really hurting the county cops. Employment relations, mileage, travel, equipment, expenses, primary categories or funding. We can't afford to throw $1.4 million away. If you can afford that, then cut my taxes. You have it, you raised it 9% for the last four years and 24% last year. So if you have that much money, cut my taxes. Please vote for the Stone Garden. One of the tax bill fails instead of, tax base fails instead of increase, as Mr. Huckleberry indicated it might or should. Water issues. We're going to be in a drought. We're going to be cut by 2019. I've been following Lake Mead for 20 years and we're going to be in a drought and we're going to cut water. We'll be doing water rationing, cutting, and so that's going to knock the legs out of the prices. My house won't be worth as much because my water bill is going to be sky high if I can get it. So therefore, people aren't going to come and buy houses or build new houses because of the lack of water. And therefore, the people who are already here, that's your tax base, Mr. Huckleberry. My house is tax based. 1947 it was built. And you are taking, saying my house is worth more money, therefore you can pay more taxes and do this bond. I don't think that the bond is necessary. There's a lot of HIRF money that has not been spent. Cut out the bonding and also paying the transportation people out of the HIRF money.
You completed your three minutes, Mickey.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your time. I would note for correcting the record, Mr. Huckleberry, how much did we reduce taxes by this year?
Mr. Chairman, the primary property tax rate was dropped 39 cents.
And so that was a 25 cent reduction? I'm trying to remember exactly.
It was about a 9% reduction.
A 9% reduction?
And it was the largest single property tax rate reduction in 32 years.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is going to be... Could you please come to order, please, in the room? Once again, Mr. Score, this is the fifth time in the last two meetings that I've had to admonish you to come to order, so I'm asking you to please be respectful. Our next speaker is going to be JP Salvatierra. Mr. Salvatierra, please come forward and you have three minutes to speak.
Chairman Elias, Board members, my name is Jonathan Salvatierra. I'm a retired railroader, real estate broker here in Tucson, and a native Tussonian. And there are many issues of very significant merit that we need your action on immediately. There's one overall State of the Union that I would like to make initially, but after that, I'm citing a newspaper article that came in over the weekend, Saturday, by Tony Davis from the Tucson Daily Star. But first of all, I'd like to say that we, the people, are revolted by the indignant disregard that an oligarchy-driven ethos has fomented as a cancer upon our communities, country, and national pride by foisting an election fraud impostor into the highest elected office to usurp our freedom, due process, foreign diplomatic agenda priorities, precedents in law, and other acts, to subjugate our great nation into egregious poverty by denying basic human rights, free transparently verified elections, and strict adherence to their fiduciary duty to honor, serve, and protect we, the people's constituent public authority strictly delegated to public servants. I'm citing a personal journalistic fact point and the September 29, 2018 article by Tony Davis in Tucson Daily Star on point. "Our municipal CAP Valley Water may have been blended over the last decade with residual tarp recharge gone wrong. Blending contaminated PFAS compounds, pre-fluorinated chemicals, recharged into a V-shaped area serving domestic water to approximately 60,000 west and northwest residents in Pima County." These are your constituents. They're in trouble. Their water has been polluted for almost 10 years now. And we're just getting the facts. This article and many other things you need to be aware of. In a conservation, in a con... excuse me, conservative risk management approach to our county landscape employees who are forced to use glyphosate products and be certified as a manner of their indenture and their job to also protect our employees, the public, and wildlife...
Mr. Salvatierra, you've used up your three minutes of time?
Mr. Chairman, he's got some written remarks that he can't, since he can't finish. If you could submit them to the clerk and we will put them online.
These will be submitted to the clerk and, but the most important thing about this is glyphosate, atrazine, neonicotinoids in all our state lands. Thank you very much.
Please come to order.
You're my family and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next speaker is going to be Ryan Kelly. Mr. Puck Kelly, if you'd please come forward and give us your name for the record. You have three minutes and thank you for being here, sir.
All right. Thanks for putting up with some of the circus this morning. My name is Ryan Kelly and I live in District One. We keep hearing from our elected sheriff, I remind you, our elected sheriff, that the Board's decision to end Operation Stone Garden was a purely political decision, that this is playing politics. But this is so far from the truth. This wasn't the result of a brash political stunt concocted without forethought. Indeed, it was a seven-month process. A commission was formed to review it. And I've heard the sheriff say in one of those commission meetings, which are open to the public, that one way or another, he'd get this money. And he said that in a very openly intimidating manner, which was not helpful to the efforts of that volunteer commission. I've recently seen our elected sheriff in the thick of the Stone Garden consideration at the White House on personal invite to honor the Agency of Immigration and Customs Enforcement. I've seen our elected sheriff on Fox Business Channel with Charles Payne politicizing this very issue. I've seen our elected sheriff on the national cable news talk show Fox and Friends politicizing this issue further. I've not seen our supervisors, who've bravely and thoughtfully made this decision to terminate the grant, making national media rounds. Now that the decision has been made, why on earth would the Board willingly cede its state constitutional powers of oversight directly to the Sheriff's Department or any department within the county, for that matter? It is not the job, is it not the job of our supervisors to supervise the many departments of our county? This new resolution proposed to give the Sheriff's Department full authority over grant acceptance is playing politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Our next speaker is going to be Steve Diamond. Mr. Diamond, if you'd please come forward. Appreciate you being here. You have three minutes and if you could give us your name for the record and, and you're not in favor of I-11, or are you?
No.
Just the same name.
I'll clarify. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Diamond and I would like to clarify, I have no connection whatsoever to the Mr. Diamond referred to by Mr. Cole. Since September 4th, Sheriff Napier has redoubled his PR campaign broadcasting his narrative about the Stone Garden vote all over the media, even on national TV, Fox and Friends, where he agreed it was just a flat-out anti-Trump thing. He has deliberately insulted this Board by saying that you care more about opposing Trump's policies than you do about keeping Pima County residents safe. Make no mistake, his uncontrolled rhetoric reflects on each and every one of you, not only on the majority who voted to cancel the Stone Garden grant. And today we have this resolution, a resolution of non-interference in the Pima County Sheriff's efforts to secure outside funding, a resolution that is built around the very same talking points Sheriff Napier has been proclaiming to everyone who would listen. The resolution claims to be about the Stone Garden grant, but in fact, it would neither reverse the September 4th vote, nor would it bind the Board in the future. In fact, it would not even apply to the Stone Garden grant because Stone Garden fails to meet the stated criterion that the grant does not require any additional funding or other appropriation by the Board of Supervisors. So it doesn't accomplish its stated goals. All it does is continue to stoke divisiveness in this community with a web of demonstrably false assertions. Sheriff Napier has accused the Board of politicizing Stone Garden, but he's the one who continues to make politics out of it and to do so in a way that demeans every member of this Board. The resolution also seeks to deliver authority to the sheriff that isn't yours to give. You have the fiscal authority. You also have supervisory authority over the sheriff's official conduct. Those are matters of state law. The resolution is powerless to change them. It's nothing but political theater, and I have to say, not very good theater. If you pass this resolution, you will be agreeing with all the disparaging remarks about your not caring about community safety, and you will be directly challenging state law that establishes your rights and responsibilities. Is that what you really want to do? I call on all five of you to preserve the dignity and the independence of this Board. I call on you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speaker is going to be Kristen Randall. Kristen, if you'd come forward, please. Thank you for being here. You have three minutes and I think you know the routine by now, so...
Yeah, by now. My name is Kristen Randall. I'm a resident of District Two. As constituents, we elect you, the Board. We also elect our row officers, which include sheriff, prosecutor, recorder, and others. And yet it is here, and only here, with this body where we can air our grievances publicly. The other officers win their elections and then they may or may not be available for public meetings. This is no criticism on the office holders themselves, rather, this is just a statement about how the system is set up. So it is via the Board and its regular call to the public that regular people like myself have a voice. So it's with much cynicism that I address Agenda Item Four this morning, a proposed resolution to limit even further the purview of this body, which, remember, is the only one available to me, and grants sweeping powers to an office where I have no voice except at the ballot box every four years. This is not something I would want with a Republican sheriff, a Democratic sheriff, or even my best friend as sheriff. Why do I find this so objectionable besides being an obvious politicization? The resolution cites 11-441, the powers and duties of the sheriff, as a way to bolster the claim that grants should not be required to go through the Board. Yet nowhere in this statute does it mention grants at all, simply the duties of the sheriff. Yet in 11-251, the powers of the Board, the very first provision states, supervise the official conduct of all county officers charged with assessing, collecting, safekeeping, managing, or dispersing the public revenues. See that the officers faithfully perform their duties. I'd also like to mention that this resolution would null the Community Law Enforcement Partnership Commission and wouldn't even apply to the Stone Garden grant. I think Steve was talking about this. He did a better job than I will. The resolution states that the sheriff would be permitted to bypass Board approval for grants if the grant does not require any additional funding or other appropriation, when we know that the Stone Garden grant does indeed require more money for boosted pensions and mileage not being fully reimbursed, paid for by the Pima County taxpayer. So we are left with strong but empty words on a piece of paper and another way to try and capture more news headlines, and that's it. I would also like to note that I just recently looked this up. Pima County ranks sixth out of the 15 counties in the state from least amount of poverty to most for persons below the poverty level. That means that nine of the counties out of the 15 have worse poverty than we do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kristen. That's an interesting correction to today's discussion. Our next speaker is going to be Marla Pacheco. Marla, if you'd come forward, please, and give us your name for the record and thank you for being here. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Marla Pacheco and I live in District Four. I work for an organization, Derechos Humanos, and I'm here, I work with the affected community. And I see the damage that police brutality, police abuse affects our community. And I am, we, as a community member, a lot of these people, a lot of our community, we're here to oppose Stone, oppose Stone Garden. The community, we're tired of seeing how crimes are committed, how the Border Patrol kills with impunity. If this resolution passes, what's the accountability on the sheriff? What accountability will they have? On a recent post on social media, I said, continuing my support against Stone Garden, Sheriff Napier made a comment of how he will continue to collaborate with Border Patrol. And this is scary. This is scary for me because this is my community, this is all of our community, and we're here and we work here and we live here and we raise our children here. And the sheriff is here for political gain. He will not be here for a long time. He's looking to move up by using our community. That is all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pacheco. Our next speaker is going to be Marion Chivon. Our next speaker is going to be Marion Chuvon. Marion, thank you for being here. If you'd give us your name for the record, please, in three minutes, I'd appreciate it very much.
Thank you. My name is Marion Chuvon and I'm in District 4. And I'm here also to oppose the non-binding, non-interference Resolution 2018. I also, oh, Ramon's gone. I wanted to thank those of you who voted. I didn't have an opportunity to thank you for voting to end the Stone Garden funds. And so, Ramon, thank you very much.
I'm sure he's listening back here.
Okay, good.
We have microphones, speakers everywhere.
So, I don't have a prepared statement. I think that those who already spoke before me can speak more to the legal aspects, but, you know, I'll just speak from an emotional point of view, which is, I don't see how giving a sheriff more autonomy in this moment in time where the sheriff has been politicizing this issue that affects our community so intensely is a good idea. I think what we need is less autonomy from our law enforcement. I also want to put in a plea that we expand and continue the Community Law Enforcement Commission. I think that some good information came out of that. That commission actually is responsible for getting some of the statistics, some of the stop statistics. I think that the community deserves to know how our law enforcement, our Pima County Sheriff's Department, is collaborating with the federal agencies and continues to, as he has stated again and again, that he's going to continue to collaborate. He just didn't get the 1.4 million. And so, I just want to put in a plea that more autonomy is a bad idea for the sheriff's department. I think that it's upon you to continue to supervise the funds and the actions of that department and want to, again, say that let's expand the Community Partnership Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Our next speaker is going to be Sarah May Williams. Sarah, if you'd come forward, please, and give us your name for the record, please, and you have three minutes. And appreciate you spending your time here and coming all the way from cells. Long drive.
Yes. Thank you, Sarah May Williams. I believe I'm in District 3.
Before you start the timer, did you, what's the rain out there? It looked miserable.
It was everywhere, so it's going to get worse, I believe.
You're not going to drive back till it's over?
I have to, yeah.
That was very rude, sir. That's the sixth time I'm admonishing you to please keep yourself in order. If this continues, I'm going to have to ask you to be removed.
Okay, Sarah May Williams, from the Thaunautum Nation. I am in District 3. And, you know, it's been interesting to hear all the discussion that's happening here, but I do come to the table with a different perspective altogether when it comes to Stone Garden funds. And I just wanted to paint a very real picture for everybody because I've heard some individuals laughing in this audience about, you know, giving more autonomy to law enforcement. Well, we've done that on the Thaunautum Nation and we've suffered from it. You know, we have had Border Patrol come into our homes and illegally search our homes with machine guns in plain dress. You know, they've come, they've searched, they said they were looking for illegal immigrants, but instead they're looking through our garbage cans, they're looking through our cupboards and finding nothing. You know, this is a common thing that happens on our nation. And not only that, but every time I leave my nation, I have to state my citizenship. And then if they find something or they seem suspicious, they end up handcuffing me and then they search my vehicle as well. And this is probably no big deal to everyone else, but this is what happens when you allow law enforcement to kind of run rampant. And there is no parameters on or protocols with what happens between those individual law enforcement agencies. So, if there's going to be anything that happens regarding Stone Garden or between our law enforcement, it's setting those protocols down because without that, it allows you to go into citizens' homes and do whatever they wish to do. And that's where we're at on the Thaunautum Nation right now. And so, that's why I'm still in opposition to Stone Garden. You know, I think that people need to realize that the fear that's been created, let me tell you that on the Thaunautum Nation, you have little children and elders living along that border who are not living in fear like everybody else. Those that live in fear are some 200 miles away from that border and they want to feel safe, but what about us that live there who are not complaining about it? Because reality is this, we've had very little deaths that have resulted from immigrants. We've had more injustice happen at the hands of Border Patrol and law enforcement than any other entity out there. So, again, it's, whatever fear is built up within you, you need to look at or actually go to the border and see what exists there because there are a lot of happy families living there without any craziness going on, except the injustice coming from the law enforcement agencies that are in the area. So, again, you may laugh at that, but I say, reality is that you need to go out there or you need to look inside yourselves and realize that it's fear. That's all it is, nothing more than that. And so, there is no point in putting more money into something that is not benefiting anyone except for those, like I said, who live so far from the border who want to feel safe. Well, think about everybody else that lives along there because I personally, living eight miles from the border, feel absolutely safe. I don't get up in the morning afraid to do the things that I need to do. So, listen to the people that are living along the border and let's make some real decisions here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be Gabriela Casares Kelly. Thank you for being here, Ms. Kelly, and you have three minutes. Please give us your name for the record.
I'm also a member of the Thaunautum Nation. I am a teacher, so I'm very glad to be here today because normally, these meetings aren't accessible to me as I work in a classroom during the regular business day. I do live in Supervisor District 1, but I spend the majority of my time working and volunteering and organizing in District 3. And so, it's very interesting that you brought up the rain today. Obviously, one of the major things that is happening on our nation today is that, one, two, three, four, five, seven roads are blocked off due to washes, to extreme washes that people can't pass through. That poses, I mean, more than just a minor inconvenience, it is a major health risk if there were to be an emergency, which there is a nursing home right in the center of the Thaunautum Nation, which would be inaccessible to emergency services such as an ambulance to get through and those types of things. So, that is a common occurrence. And just recently, I had a busload of students in my district that could not make it through a wash and were there from almost 3:00 in the afternoon. They had done an early release trying to beat the washes, but the washes came before. And they were there until 10:00 at night. And so, you know, I only get three minutes of time that we can share some of the issues that are going on the Thaunautum Nation. So, I'd really, I'd like to invite any of the supervisors who would like to take a visit on our nation and to hear more about the issues that are affecting us. Stone Garden, as Sarah May brought up, the border militarization is extreme. I'm daily profiled, racially profiled, I've brought that up before. Our lack of library access and the conditions of our roads, we have some major issues and we are Pima County residents, you know, we do participate in here and you're on our lands. And there's responsibility to the Thaunautum people and people who are living in rural communities to make sure that they have access to the services that you provide the rest of the metropolitan area. And so, I'd urge you to please take me up on that invitation and I extend that to all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just so you're aware, Supervisor Elias and I spent all of Thursday touring the border and how is it the Balmari wash that is, yeah, must be a mess today.
It is insane. I can't visit my mom today. I wanted to visit her later today and I can't, so.
Hope she's okay. Very good. Thank you for being here. Michael Sees, I think, is here next, our next speaker. Michael, thank you for being here today. Always appreciate your comments. If you'd give us your name for the record and three minutes, sir, I'd appreciate it.
Michael Sees, I'm the chairperson of the Green Party of Pima County, for those of you that don't know me. Other speakers have spoken to this more eloquently. I'm here to speak about item number four, the proposed resolution. The Green Party, in solidarity with the community and the Free the Children Coalition, calls upon the Pima County Board of Supervisors to vote no on this resolution, item number four. The Green Party affirms that migration is a human right and we are outraged by the current situation at the U.S. border regarding the inhumane treatment of children and families seeking refuge from the United States' imperialist policies visited upon Latin American nations. Once again, I call upon the Board of Supervisors to vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our next speaker is going to be Joe Holt. Joe, thank you for being here with us today. We appreciate you coming down and your time. If you would give us three minutes and please give us your name for the record.
Yes, good morning, Chairman Elias and members of the board. My name is Joe Holt and I proudly volunteer as the Chair of the Pima County Democratic Party. We have over 200,000 registered Democrats in Pima County. We're organized into clubs, caucuses, legislative district committees. And last night, our executive board met in what is our regular October meeting, and we passed a resolution. And the board asked me to come over this morning and share this resolution with you, which it is my very, very great pleasure to do. This was passed unanimously, in fact. It's a resolution in support of the rejection of Operation Stone Garden by the Pima County Board of Supervisors. And let me just read a few parts of this to you and then I will send this to the clerk later.
Thank you, Chair.
Whereas Operation Stone Garden promoted the use of federal funds to collaborate with local law enforcement to create conditions which have sown fear in our local immigrant communities. Whereas zero-tolerance traffic stops conducted by local law enforcement in our county border regions under Operation Stone Garden have resulted in only a 16% citation rate, suggesting an unconstitutional stop-and-frisk-natured program designed to target migrant populations within our community. Whereas per the terms of this federal grant, no negative impacts on the abilities of our sheriff's department to conduct their duties to protect and serve under the best practices of community policing would result from its termination. Whereas our party recognizes the value in building community trust with our hard-working law enforcement. Collaborating with federal immigration agencies through Operation Stone Garden discouraged victims within immigrant communities from reporting crimes to proper authorities for fear of consequences posed upon families, friends, and neighbors. Therefore, be it resolved that the Pima County Democratic Party supports and stands by the decision of the Pima County Board of Supervisors to reject the funds for the program known as Operation Stone Garden and supports the termination of the collaborative practices it has funded in Pima County. And let me just take the opportunity to thank the board for your service to this community and for tolerating the remarkable disrespect that I have observed here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is going to be Julie McIntyre. Did I get that correct? Julie McIntyre. Maybe she had to leave. All right, our next speaker is going to be Brenda Wexler. Thank you for being here, Brenda. We certainly appreciate it. And you know the routine, three minutes and give us your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Brenda Wexler. And this is the fourth time I'm here speaking about Stone Garden. I can't believe it. And I'm the lady who sent three of you personal cards thanking you for your vote and my contribution to the Florence Project, which I would, in your honor, for being so courageous. My initial gut feeling about having to be here today is that two powerful white men in this room didn't get their way. And I don't know what else to say about that. And it seems like there was a lawful decision that was made.
Please, I'm sorry, Brenda. We'll give you a little extra time.
Yeah, I'm going to get really agitated personally.
I know.
It's the seventh time that there was somebody else.
Okay, we need the room to come to order, please.
And I believe that particularly the sheriff didn't get his way, and he usually does. And that's why I feel we're here again revisiting this issue. I understand that it's really unsettling in this day and age to be a white male when you see the demographic shift that's happening in this country. So, I feel, I feel, I kind of feel how you must feel since me as a woman, and I could corroborate the fact that I am one. I understand that you may feel really uncomfortable.
Please, sir.
And I'm asking the majority.
Just a moment, Ms. Wexler. I'm going to have to ask you to leave if it happens one more time. You understand? Excuse me, same with you, sir. She has the floor in an appropriate manner, sir. You do not. Please leave.
I do want to say that in terms of.
Ms. Wexler, please, I apologize to you.
Okay, in terms of identity politics, since the beginning of this nation, we know that my white males have been, you know, playing the identity politics card. And I'm sorry if I'm contributing to making people feel uncomfortable, but we have been feeling uncomfortable for a very, very long time. And I just want to beg the majority not to be intimidated, please, by these very powerful men. I have difficulty coming here and speaking here when Sheriff Napier has been speaking all over the nation and I can't even get my three minutes without being interrupted. So, please, please have respect for all of these people that, or Sheriff Napier, that's stoking fear in this community. The community is a wonderful community, and I just can't believe what's happening to this country and how powerful, we all know how powerful fear is, and Sheriff Napier knows it above everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wexler. Appreciate your time. Our next speaker is going to be David Eppenheimer. Mr. Eppenheimer, thank you for being here. You have three minutes and if you'd please give us your name for the record.
David Eppenheimer, I'm the chairman of the Pima County Republican Party. Supervisors and Chairman Elias. First thing I want to say is that as a horseman, I too spend time on the border and it's with the ranchers who live and work there. And I can tell you, this is not in my prepared remarks, they live in fear of the illegal immigration.
Mr. Eppenheimer, please address the board.
Okay, I'll address you. Thank you. I didn't know that was not permitted. Your presentation ahead of this did address the audience.
That's our prerogative.
Okay. So, I would say they live in fear and their families live in fear of the illegal invasion by people who have not passed through the proper circumstances to get here. Now, I urge you to vote for the passage of Agenda Item 4, the resolution proposed by Supervisor Christie this morning. As was clearly stated in the Pima GOP's Stone Garden Resolution, I read at your last meeting, a primary responsibility of the Board of Supervisors, as found on its own website, is to ensure safe communities and protect public health. By refusing the Stone Garden grant, the majority of the Board of Supervisors advocated its responsibility in this regard. Please don't continue to a small but vocal minority who are opposed to public safety Please don't continue to a small but vocal minority who are opposed to public safety on political grounds. Please don't let hatred of this president and his entire administration color your judgment of what is good for Pima County. Don't be cowed by threats of retribution at the ballot box. Do what is right for Pima County. Vote for Supervisor Christie's resolution today.
We're going to take a break at this point. It's 10:15, but we're going to go ahead and take a break here, let everybody settle down a little bit. Thank you very much.
Anyhow, real quick too, did you get that text about the request to see if we could get on the doors to speak about the nomination?
Did you see?
Well, we did talk with Sarah. She doesn't have time to do it herself.
I'd like to call back to order the October 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Christie?
Mr. Chairman, a point of personal privilege in the essence of time and people's schedules, can we move addendum item number four to the present placement on the agenda so we can deal with it?
Yes, we can do that.
And in so doing, I'm going to ask that both sides maintain a semblance of decorum and civility, that we can get through this in a rational and unemotional manner, and that the item before us can be discussed on a mature and rational level. I think it's important that we listen to each other, but more importantly, that we don't interrupt. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if I may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christie. We'll take a break from call to the audience, and we're going to move to item four on the addendum, Board of Supervisors, non-interference in Pima County Sheriff's election to disqualify outside funding, including Resolution 2018-65. Supervisor Christie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring this resolution before the Board today for an assortment of reasons. First and foremost, the motivation for my resolution comes in response to scores of emails, phone calls, letters, and other forms of communications received by the Board from the public, expressing their outrage over the termination of the Operation Stone Garden grant last month by the majority of the Board of Supervisors. My constituents and the residents of Pima County are beyond being shocked, beyond being appalled, and beyond being frustrated over why a federal grant designed to assist our sheriff and other area law enforcement agencies in protecting our citizens should even be a point to debate, much less terminated. It has been pointed out numerous times, on numerous occasions, that the Operation Stone Garden grant has been summarily and routinely approved by the Board's majority for 12 years, and that the grant's fundamental purpose and focus has not ever changed during that time. What has changed is who now occupies the White House in Washington DC, and who now is the sheriff of Pima County. This very same grant, Operation Stone Garden, was rubber stamped by this Board under two previous presidential administrations. This very same grant was rubber stamped by this Board under two previous sheriff's administrations, both of whom were Democrats. I assure you, if either Sheriff Dupnik or Sheriff Nanos were sheriff today, there would be absolutely no problem of accepting this grant by this Board. This is all about pure politics at its most shameful, and it comes at the expense of public safety. The sheriff has both the statutory and constitutional authority to maintain public safety in our county. In fact, he has a mandate as an elected official to do so. The Board of Supervisors should not, for purely political reasons, interfere with the sheriff's exercise of those authorities by rejecting funding he has requested. It is important to point out and remind this Board that Sheriff Napier received more than 222,000 votes in Pima County. When the sheriff presents a grant to the Board that, in his judgment, is important to public safety, the Board of Supervisors should not reject the grant to make a political statement. The sheriff is the person best positioned to determine the merit of a public safety grant. The Board of Supervisors possesses no specific expertise in the area of public safety. An additional reason for this resolution that I now bring before the Board is that during the September 4th Board meeting, this Board and the public heard for more than four hours testimony and statements overwhelmingly from those who are opposed to accepting the Stone Garden grant. Not once throughout the September 4th meeting was Sheriff Napier asked to or allowed to speak to this grant. Of all the people who should have a say on the future of Operation Stone Garden, Sheriff Napier should have been given and should have received priority and respect, and be allowed to speak to this Board on this issue. Accordingly, I contacted Sheriff Napier and asked what I could do, and what could be done to right this wrongful Board action of terminating the Operation Stone Garden grant. What you see before you in the form of this resolution is a joint effort and collaboration between Sheriff Napier and myself. In fact, the true meat of this resolution and within its main form and body comes as a direct result of the contributions made by Sheriff Napier in this resolution's process and creation. Pay particular attention to under-resolved the sentence, quote, "This is provided that the grant does not require any additional funding or other appropriation by the Board of Supervisors, and that all ancillary costs associated with the acceptance of the grant and its administration can be absorbed under the current budget of the Sheriff's Department." This sentence fully addresses any legal issues regarding potential county liability and exposure, as well as it legally considers the Board's budgeting authority over the Sheriff's Department. The time has come, and the time is now, for this Board to take a stand and to make a statement of support of our sheriff, our brave deputies, and all of the heroes in our law enforcement community, whose thankless and dangerous mission it is to protect our citizens, our county, our state, our border, and our nation. This Board can take that stand and make that statement here today by approving this resolution. And now, Mr. Chairman, I am asking your permission this time to allow Sheriff Napier to address this Board regarding this resolution now before us.
Absolutely. I will allow Sheriff Napier to make some comments, but not at this time. I'm going to make some comments first.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order. Shouldn't we have a motion on the floor to have this discussion?
No, I don't think so, because we have some issues in even making that motion that I need to talk about here before we get to that point.
Very well.
You are assuring me that Sheriff Napier will have the opportunity to speak?
Of course, of course. And he could have on September 2nd, but he did not ask to, not once. Members of his command staff did discuss the items, but Sheriff Napier never asked to have the floor. And I want to say at the beginning of these comments that I do respect the men and women of the Sheriff's Department, and I appreciate their dangerous job. I appreciate the work that they do. They're brave, they're dedicated, there's absolutely nothing wrong with them, very proud of them. However, my concerns about Stone Garden revolve around two specific things. I want Sheriff's deputies responding to calls from Pima County residents for assistance, and when they're participating in Operation Stone Garden, they're specifically precluded from doing that. To me, our sheriffs, when they're on duty, should be answering calls from Pima County residents. The other thing is, is that $1.1 million is a lot of money, but that is not worth denigrating our sheriff's office and having people scared of them and scared to have them come to their homes. We must protect the integrity of the Sheriff's Department and make sure that there is not a culture of fear that surrounds them, and that is part of our responsibility. When it comes to grants, there's good reasons that this Board reviews all grants before they're submitted, and this is due to precedence that has taken place over probably the last 20 years, Chuck. I think that's about when that item was brought up, probably five years before I entered the Board. So it is very important that we do that, it is very serious that we do that, and that should be with all grants, and it is. And a good example of that is today, another item on the Board's agenda where the sheriffs failed to submit appropriate billing for an amount that now we need to go back and ask for, and that's from 2016. So that happens, and it should not happen. So we need to manage these grants more carefully, as Supervisor Miller consistently says. The other thing I would add into this discussion at this particular juncture is that I'd like to ask our counsel about this particular item, because my sense is that before we can make a motion on the floor, we're going to have to make a motion to suspend the rules, because this is a blatant attempt to circumvent the rules and ask for a reconsideration of this item in an improper manner. A reconsideration has to be asked for by a person who voted in the affirmative on that motion. Supervisor Christie voted in the negative and lost on that particular item. So I'd ask our counsel, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's a correct statement of the Board's rule. My interpretation of this resolution is that it would be a policy going forward and not a reconsideration of the Stone Garden grant, but if it is a reconsideration, it has to be made by a member on the prevailing side, and it should be at the next Board meeting.
The word reconciliation is specifically used, counsel?
The word reconsideration is used in this item, Mr. Chairman? I'll have to go back and read it, I don't remember seeing that.
That was my understanding of it.
Mr. Chairman, there's no notion of reconsideration. This is moving forward. Stone Garden is behind us, this is for future grants.
Okay, I want that assurance, then, and I'm willing to accept that. The other thing is, you said that this item had been rubber stamped by this Board. This is the first time you've ever sat on this Board and considered that item. I think it's very insulting to the Board that you would make that kind of comment, that we would have rubber stamped an item over that period of time when you were not involved in those discussions, and you had no firsthand knowledge of that, you did not vote on those items, and I find it very troubling that you would make that kind of ugly accusation in a public meeting. So I'd like an apology, but I don't expect one. I would like for you to make a motion now, so that we can have a proper discussion regarding this item.
Mr. Chair, I move that we discuss the resolution before us on the addendum.
You move to move the resolution itself, Steve.
I would make the motion to move the resolution on the addendum item number four.
And you are speaking about Resolution 2018-65? Very good. You asked that Sheriff Napier be allowed to make some comments. Sheriff, why don't you make some comments?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, I'm sorry. Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. You know, as I sat back there, I don't have prepared remarks, I always speak from my heart, which I wear on my sleeve. It pains me to see the divisiveness that this grant has brought the Board and our community, it does. It shouldn't be this way. And we did work dutifully hard to engage the community, to address concerns. The Board in February, I believe it was, put five conditions on the Sheriff's Department for acceptance of the grant, and I tried to dutifully meet those conditions. And then some more conditions were put on the grant, and I again tried to march in the right direction, worked with the community, worked with stakeholders that would be very odd for a Republican sheriff to work with, among them the ACLU, community groups. I've reached out to every segment of the community that I can to try to address some concerns, because there are, in fact, legitimate concerns there that we can't address. But I would like us to address those in a manner of collaboration and cooperation as a community, and the divisiveness that is in our community right now hurts me, because no matter what else you think of me, long after I'm not the sheriff of this county, this is my home, and it will remain my home. It's where my children live, it's where my granddaughter lives. So what happens to this community far transcends, in my mind, the office that I currently hold, which is just a temporary spot for me. So it bothers me a great deal, the divisiveness. This resolution before the Board, I understand where that would bring some concerns, from the community and from the Board itself. What we're simply saying here is, let's remove the air of politics from this. As an elected official, I'm elected by the people, as you are, but I'm elected by the people of the entire county. The people will speak again in 2020, and they'll decide whether or not I've done a good job, and whether they think that the path that I'm taking in our Sheriff's Department is a correct one or not. When I come before the Board and ask for approval of a grant, I do so from a different position than the Board, not disparaging the Board in any manner, but simply saying that as a law enforcement professional for more than three decades, as somebody who possesses a master's degree from a top-tier university and actually teaches at the graduate level, I've worked for the Department of Justice on multiple occasions as a peer reviewer on federal grant programs. I have a great deal of expertise in this area. When a grant is presented to the Board, which requires no action from the Board, in other words, I'm not coming to you saying I need matching funds, which are incumbent upon some grants. What I'm saying is that any of those ancillary costs, I will absorb in my budget. Now, the Board knows that I have proven some ability to fiscally manage the budget of the Sheriff's Department. That's not my saying, that's simply a fact. I inherited a $6 million deficit, I cut that in half in six months, and I finished my first fiscal year, 5.5 million in the black. So I have some credibility in the fact that I'll manage my budget, I'll absorb these ancillary costs. But I'm saying, let's take this out of the political realm. Let's take this away from the political body where we have this divisiveness, and let's rest it on my shoulders. That's where it should be. It should be on my shoulders with a grant that does not require action or appropriation from the Board. If, under my authority, as a sheriff of the county to maintain public safety, my statutory constitutional responsibilities, I shoulder that responsibility, then it's on me. It's not on the Board, and we don't create this divisiveness. I have shown incredible willingness to reach out to other segments of the community. Should this resolution be passed, the kleptancy doesn't go away, my commitment to engaging the community does not change. I want to hear from the community, because there are things that we are working toward that are better. We had, when I took office, no racial profiling policy, none, and that apparently was okay with the community, wasn't okay with me. We now have a good policy. Guess who collaborated on that policy? The ACLU. We're going to be training my deputies on that policy. Guess who's collaborating with me on that? The ACLU. We have done great things here, my friends, to show that we don't have to be part of this divisiveness, that we don't have to be part of the acrimony that is absolutely infesting our country. It is a cancerous growth on our country right now, this divisiveness. We can be better than this. You have a sheriff that's willing to work with you. I have never said a disparaging thing about any member of this Board. I said that I think this was a politically motivated decision, and I think there's basis for that. But that's not to disparage any of you. Have you ever seen me not greet you, not be happy to see you? You have a sheriff who's willing to work with you and work with the community. All I'm asking for is the authority, when a grant is presented to the Sheriff's Department, for me to use three decades of experience, my education, my background in being a peer reviewer on federal grant programs with the Department of Justice, to assess that public safety nexus of that grant, the liabilities to the county, and then to shoulder that responsibility on me as an elected official, to decide if I'm not asking this body to appropriate additional funds, whether that has a public safety benefit, and then let the people speak. And I will continue to do exactly what I have been doing for the last almost two years, engaging the community, listening to all the stakeholders in this community, because this is my home. And that transcends partisanship, it transcends politics, it transcends every other thing I care about. Pima County is my home, it's been my home for 31 years, and God willing, it'll be my home for another 20-plus years. It's where my children work, it's where my wife works, and this is far more important to me than this divisiveness. We can be better than this, and this is a way that we can show that we're better than this. It's not about a power grab on my part, I'm not interested in that, it's about me shouldering the responsibility of this elected office. So I ask you to support this, support your Sheriff's Department, and to put the onus where it rightly belongs, and that's on my shoulders, and then let the people speak, and I will listen, as I have dutifully and evidenced by my conduct over the last two years. So with that, I respectfully ask that you entertain this resolution. I thank Supervisor Christie for her support, but moreover, I thank all of you for your indulgence and the fact that we still remain, I hope, friends, and that the divisiveness that tears apart our country does not tear us apart, because we are better than this. This is Pima County, this is our home, and we can rise above these things. So with that, I'll close my remarks, all from the sleeve where I wear my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff Napier. And yes, you remain a friend, and we respect you, I respect you. The comments I made regarding Stone Garden include nothing related to politics. I ask that our sheriffs be able to respond to our own folks when they call. However, we have to be cognizant of the fact that federal policy does affect us, and federal policy has taken a turn towards the extreme ugly, and I think that this Board's vote on Stone Garden was one to protect us from that divisiveness, and make us feel welcome in our own community, and make sheriffs welcome at our doors when they come to respond to a call that's made by a Pima County resident. I think that's critical, I'm not ashamed of that, I'm proud of that vote, I don't think it was political at all, I think it was absolutely the right thing to do. Any other comments from Board members? Supervisor Bronson?
Yes, I just, again, I agree with your remarks, but I think for the record, it's my understanding that in 2016, things did change with Stone Garden, at least we heard, we've had some of that information when we had the conversation with law enforcement on the nation, and that our deputies or our peace officers are reporting directly to Board of Patrol, which wasn't the case in the past, and I think that the other piece is the one that you mentioned, that we need our law, our peace officers working for us, not working for the Board of Patrol. And as to the grants, we've had this grant policy in place for many reasons, for many years, and I see no reason to change how we're doing business. We need some better monitoring of grants, and this is the way to make it happen.
Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, whether anyone wants to acknowledge it or not, I have supported the Sheriff's Department as well, prior to Sheriff Napier even coming on board. I've supported the deputies in their quest to get raises, I've supported the Stone Garden grants before this year, and I've continued to support them. I voted yes on this grant in February, most people aren't aware of that, but February we took a vote, I voted yes. It was then reconsidered September 4th, and the Board voted to reject it. I continue to support the Sheriff's deputies and the Sheriff's Department, I think they are critical to our safety, well-being, and I have heard loud and clear from my constituents before 2016 and continuing after 2016, public safety is critical. And this Stone Garden grant, in my opinion, we should have accepted it, but we have a Board majority that chose not to, to reject it after we accepted it. I think it's real unfortunate, I think that the Sheriff's Department has a duty to protect us, and I also agree with what Sheriff Napier said, that it's his responsibility, and it's his responsibility to protect this community, and he is a duly-elected official, and should have responsibility and should have authority to run his department as he sees fit. Thank you.
Supervisor Valdez?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I do want to commend the sheriff and the Sheriff's Department, because you have been working with the community members, so I commend you, Mark, and to your department as well, and they have a hard job to do. But I'll also talk a little bit more about something that's really kind of bothering Part of when we hear a discussion, and we talk about policy, we need to get beyond, if we agree with it, it's we disagree with the, or we agree with the policy, but if we disagree with the decision, then it's politics. You can disagree with the policy, folks, and a lot of what's going on right now has to do with, if you look at an issue, inside a vacuum, it looks like you're doing the right thing, but outside of that vacuum, it's different. The effect outside of that vacuum is different. The effect on the community is different. The effect on people is different from inside the vacuum. So understand that I can disagree with my colleagues here, but it's a disagreement on policy. But when I look at this resolution, there are a number of issues. First of all, part of what I think we've been involved in some discussions fairly recently is the separation of executive functions from legislative ones, and what that actually means. And while I am not somebody who would support our interference in an executive function, I also don't support giving up the legislative function to an executive. And what's the difference? The difference is very simple to me. Part of the reason our Constitution, both federally and in the state of Arizona, separates the legislative from the executive, from the judicial, is to ensure that there are checks and balances. That doesn't mean that one is right over the other, that doesn't mean that one is more powerful than the other. All that means is that each has a responsibility to our community to make sure that what is happening in the other branch is in the best interest of its community. Now, one of the differences that I think is very important in this case, between the legislative and the executive function, is that the legislative is a public venue. An executive makes a decision and carries it out. A legislative body in its legislative function provides a public venue, and I think, Kristin, I think you may have mentioned that earlier, but it does provide that public venue, for that public discourse, for that public input. Whether or not you agree with it, doesn't matter, it's irrelevant. That is part of the function of the legislative, and part of why the legislative function in this whole discussion is so important, because that is the venue where the public has a say. In the executive venue, it really doesn't, not in the same kind of way. So this resolution, I think, interferes in a couple of different ways. It asks this Board to consider giving up its legislative mandate under the federal and the state constitution, but beyond that, it gives us to, it forces us to give up that public venue. Again, agree or disagree. And I think we've all been here, where we, I mean, it's a venue regardless of whether or not you agree or disagree with it. So you're asking us to give that up, but it's not ours to give up. We can't, because the true losers in that is the public, regardless of the side. Beyond that, this also has some other structural issues in that frankly, the only body or group of people or person, entity, in Pima County that can enter into IGAs is this one, the five of us. No one else. No one else has the executive authority to bind the county to an intergovernmental agreement, a contract, and we are being asked to give that up. Well, I don't believe that legally we can give that up. So for that, and one of the other issues is, in part of the resolution, it refers to ancillary costs. Well, there's, yes, matching funds is one part of that. The other part of that is also that there are additional costs when our deputies are doing Stone Garden, there's an additional cost to taxpayers based on the retirement pay. So it goes into yet another issue, in that the budgets for our execu, for our row officers is not a lump-sum budget, it is a line-item budget. Lump-sum means they can, they have this amount, and you can do with it whatever you want. Line-item says, here's this line item, here's this line item, here's this line item, they're not to coalesce, this is what the money is for. Row officers don't have a lump-sum budget, they have a line-item budget that is approved by this Board through every budgetary cycle. So for those reasons, I don't, I don't believe that I can support this resolution, and I don't plan on doing it today.
Thank you, Supervisor Valdez, and I would just comment that I agree with Supervisor Bronson and her comments, and I think your comments are very well-placed as well, and point out the structural problems in government created by resolutions like this, and the resultant expectations of absolute power and lump-sum budgeting, which is simply not going to happen on the clock of this Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Christie, and then Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Supervisor Valdez for that description.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Supervisor Valdez for that description of the legal and constitutional processes involved. The one thing I did glean from his comments, that when he stated that in this process, in his belief, the true losers are the members of the public in this issue. And from that standpoint, I would agree that the public is the true losers, because we lose public safety at the expense of allowing politics to be engaged in the decision-making process of accepting outside grants.
I disagree with that completely. The public wins in this case, because we can remain steadfast in our belief that the Pima County sheriffs, when they arrive at our door, are on our side and not on a misguided mission. Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask the county attorney if, just for his opinion related to the authority of the board as described by Supervisor Valdez, if you could expound on that a bit, please.
Casse, please.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, Supervisor Valdez made some pretty broad comments, so.
I guess specifically, my understanding, and I think Supervisor Valdez summarized it for me, is that the board has the budgetary authority that is prescribed in state statute over these line offices. And I was wanting to get your opinion, if that is what you believe as you read the statutes, because that's something that, I think that's what I read, but I'm not sure from a legal perspective. I'd just like to hear what you have to say from a legal perspective.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, it's correct that the board has budgetary authority over the elected officials. There's a test for, you know, the extent to which the board's budgetary authority can interfere with elected officials' exercise of their statutory power. That's been addressed by a number of cases in the Arizona courts. So yes, the board has budgetary authority. It's not absolute authority. I guess that would be my general answer to that question.
And I think what you mean by that is they, we have budgetary authority, but as Supervisor Valdez alluded to, the administrative authority rests with the sheriff, rests with the row officer, and that's a conundrum that we've been dealing with because of the way our constitution was established. We elect these row officers, and the problem, or, and if you look at cities and towns, they do not. They're, it's merit-selection-based, so we're always going to be at that loggerhead.
What is the test? You said there was a test regarding the authority?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, again, speaking generally, the test with respect to the board's budgetary authority and the elected official's statutory authority is that the board can't use its budgetary authority in a way that unreasonably interferes with the elected official's ability to do his or her statutory job.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
No.
Supervisor Kristi?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
I'm going to say yes, but I believe the direction on the attorney on statutory authority is an issue. Thank you.
Supervisor Valdez?
No.
Supervisor Elias?
No, motion fails. We're back at call to the audience, and we're going to complete the speakers who have submitted cards to us. J.D. Schechter? Nope, gone, okay. Robert Rice, Robert, would you please come forward? You have three minutes, sir, and if you would give us your name for the record, please. Thank you very much for spending your time here and being patient today.
And I appreciate your patience with all of this. Today marks 50 years to the day from the 1968, October 2nd, 1968, Tlatelolco massacre in the plaza of today's cultures in Mexico City. Don't tell me it's not pertinent to what we're doing, because I could tell you that this is the reason these 20 million people have left. Rather than do the presentation that I had prepared, I'm going to read a poem with your permission. "In Memory of Tlatelolco." Darkness breeds violence, and violence seeks darkness to carry on its bloody deeds. That is why on October 2nd, they waited for nightfall, so that no one would see their hand that held the gun, only its sudden lightning flash. And who is there in the last pale light of day? Who is the killer? Who are those who writhe in agony, those who are dying, those who fled in panic, leaving their shoes behind? Those who fell into the dark pit of prison? Those rotting in hospital? Those who became forever mute from sheer terror? Who are they? How many are they? Not one, not a trace of any of them the next day. By dawn the following morning, the plaza had been swept clean. Read stories of the, in the papers, where the weather, on TV, and the radio, and the movie theater programs went on as scheduled, no interruptions or announcements. Don't search for something there. There are no stage, there are no signs of now traces of blood, dead bodies, because it was all an offering to the goddess, the eater of excrement. Shouldn't be able to wrap this up in my last minute. Don't search in the files, because no records have been kept. But I feel pain when I probe right here, here in my memory, it hurts. So the ground is real, blood mingling with blood, and I call it my own blood. If I call it my own blood, I betray, I betray one and all. I remember, we remember, this is our way of hastening the dawn, of shedding a day, a ray of light on so many consciences that bear a heavy burden, on angry pronouncements, yawning prison gates, faces hidden behind masks. I remember, let us all remember, until justice comes to all of us.
Thank you, Robert. That was, that was very beautiful, and I'm pleased that somebody remembered the anniversary of what happened at Plaza Tatalolco. It was a true horrible event, and still is not recognized as having even happened by the Mexican government. Very sad.
I would insist that 10 billion, 20 billion people have left Mexico directly as a result of this. Thank you.
No. Our next speaker is going to be Stephen Markowitz. Okay, how about Lena Rothman? Thank you for being here. Appreciate your patience. I know it's been hard getting to you today, but I apologize for that.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the supervisors that voted to turn down the Stone Garden Grant once again. I wanted to talk about the politics of fear, the psychology of fear. I mean, you know, there's, I'm afraid to walk out, I'm not really, but if I brought into this fear, I would be afraid to leave my house. I'd be afraid to even be in my house. We are being played by this government, and that's what's terrifying. It's not the people that are terrifying, it's the legislature that's terrified, terrifying. It's the news media that runs these stories every day. Oh, someone's waiting to get you. The minute you stand at, walk outside that door, someone's going to get you. But anyway, I wrote something. When the community doesn't agree with the board of supervisors over its votes, we don't get to do do-overs. I couldn't understand why you thought you had the right to do a do-over. We have, I've been to this room four times over this issue. Sheriff Napier was elected. He works for us. We pay his salary. He doesn't get to command the people who pay his salary just because he says so. He has an important job, but he is not an authority over me when I'm not breaking the law. In every statement, this resolution claims that we need the Stone Garden Grant for protection and security of our people. Let's talk about the reason that there's so much violence and gang activity, both here in the U.S., South and Central America, and why people are fleeing their countries. It is because of the bogus war on drugs. This war is a war on all of our people. It's a reason for gang-related killings, for robberies and break-ins, and for people in these countries to be unsafe. This is our war. However, it isn't a war on drugs. It's a war on our people, and all people, for the enrichment of the ruling elite coffers. Want to make America safe? Stop the war on drugs. This war was started to lock up brown and black people and poor whites for slave labor to the corporations while in prison and without. We could be using all that money to build housing, programs for addicts, better education, therapy, food programs, more jobs, meaningful jobs, that would enhance people's self-worth. When, when are we going to change our ways? Legalize the use of drugs, and all these problems go away. We are all flunkies for the rich, including all of you up there, Sheriff Napier, and all of us. When are we going to stop?
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Can I just take a few more seconds?
If you could just complete your comments, please.
I'm almost finished. When are we going to stop this madness and get off the merry-go-round that is killing us, making us all enemies and fighting amongst ourselves while they get rich and laugh at us on a daily basis? Question: What's the difference between an opioid addict and a street addict? Answer: A piece of paper called a prescription and the color of their skin.
Thank you, Lena. Our next, yes, our next speaker is going to be Brian Bickel. Mr. Bickel, if you please come forward and give us your name for the record, please, and you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir, I know the drill. Good morning, Chairman Elias, members of the board, Mr. Huckleberry. My name is Brian Bickel. I'm a resident of unincorporated Pima County Supervisor District One. Supervisor Miller, a little over a week ago, you were quoted in an article in the Arizona Daily Star, and I won't try and quote it, I will paraphrase, that you understood that only approximately 166 million of the $430 million bond issue would actually go to unincorporated Pima County due to tax equity. I have no argument with that. You went on to intimate that the distributions of HERF and VLT monies approximate $91 million a year, and two-years' worth of HERF and VLT distribution would be more than the county would realize from that bond money. Also, I agree with that. That's kind of like mixing up a cake and forgetting to put it in the oven. From there on, and in Title 28, Section 5808, Vehicle License Tax Distribution, Paragraph A, Subparagraph 2, "On the 15th calendar day, the director shall distribute or deposit all other monies received during the entire preceding month as follows. A. The county general fund monies to the county general fund." When you do that, according to the formula specified later in the legis-, in the statute, that 91 million drops to about 55 million, dedicated to road repair, or that's the premise that you use. What it actually says in statute is, "Those monies shall be apportioned among the counties for any purposes related to transportation as determined by the board of supervisors." Nowhere that I can find in the statute does it say roads. It says transportation, and I'm going to assume that transportation includes stoplights, stop signs, street lights, the stripes on the roads, the guardrails that keep us on the roads, and those silly little signs that always tell me I'm going too fast. In addition, we passed a 1997 HERF bond. That reduces that 37 million or 55 million by another $18 million for debt services on that HERF bond. Nothing that was done by this board. It was done by the people in this room who were here in 1997 and voted in the affirmative on that bond. You can't change that. It's done. So there's no misappropriation of funds. There's no mandate that it be spent strictly on roads. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, at the end of the open call, I would like an opportunity to respond.
I thought he agreed with what you said.
Because my name was invoked.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hanson Fatherby, if you'd come forward, please, and give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes, and I certainly appreciate you spending your time here and you being patient with us all, sir.
Thank you. I timed it, so it should be three minutes. Hanson Fatherby.
Excellent.
"We dispel the misconception that the bowling center was for sale due to failing revenue or any reason other than the reality that the previous owner had listed Golden Pin Lanes for sale over 10 years ago and due now to his increasing age of 85. At recent calls to the audience, community members have spoken out regarding the decision of the county to shut down Golden Pin Lanes. After the most recent call, 1,000 signatures were submitted to the clerk's office. Those who spoke at the call represented the 1,000 signatures. We believe the county's acquisition of the Golden Pin Lanes for non-bowling purposes is not good for the community nor Pima County. The 1,000 signatures represent community members, including employees, neighbors, car clubs, those trying to preserve Tucson's history, and the families, visitors, and other customers of Golden Pin Lanes. We can get more signatures. We have just begun to collect them. We have been continuing conversation with community members, and we reiterate the request that the board reconsider transforming Golden Pin Lanes. We ask that the board convene a committee to consider the following three options. Number one, single-person private ownership, a sale by the county. Number two, community-employee co-op, also a sale by the county. Or number three, remain county ownership but continue as a community bowling center through Parks and Recreation. In the case of selling the bowl to a single person or as a co-op, we have three identified key points that financiers require. Number one, historical operating statements for the bowling center. Number two, the purchase price. Number three, the revenue and expenses of the bowling center. The above information should be released so that the committee can make a better decision in the best interest of the community in regards to the Golden Pin Lanes. Please note that we contacted the previous owner in an effort to collect this information with the desire, with the desire to seek financing to reimburse the county. However, his office stated they are unable to provide it since they are no longer the owners of the Golden Pin Lanes. Yet the former owner is still operating Golden Pin Lanes and making a profit. Lastly, note that in order to continue operating with the historical profit, it is necessary to make this decision by the end of November. Golden Pin Lanes makes its profits primarily through league bowling, which is cheaper than any other facility in Tucson, and by scheduling tournaments where the average visitor spends $277 per night, which is a big income earner for Tucson. Already, other bowling centers have been luring Golden Pin Lanes leagues away, stating that if they do not reserve their spaces now, they will not have space. Additionally, out-of-town tournaments will begin reserving locations soon. We will email this request to your offices, and we hope to hear a serious response. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is going to be Felicia Chu. Thank you for being here, Felicia. Appreciate your time and your patience, and if you could please give us your name for the record, I'd appreciate that as well.
Good morning. My name is Felicia Chu. I'm a resident of Pima County in District 3. I'm also the founder of Felicia Chu Community Projects, working to help end systemic domestic violence by building relationships through sharing stories, art, and perspectives. I'm here this morning to share about why October is significant to me. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I am a survivor of domestic violence. In February of 2011, I moved to Pima County, unaware that I had been a victim of domestic violence. It was through the responses of the Tucson Police Department, Marana Police Department, and programs like Emerge and the County Attorney's Victim Advocate Program that I recognized that I was a victim. Seven years after moving to Pima County, I am able to say that I am a survivor of domestic violence. I volunteer with approximately 100 other community members as a victim advocate through Barbilla Wall's office. The Victim Advocate Program has been recognized across the nation as an excellent model. Pima County has been a leader in being an advocate to victim rights and to human rights. One of the reasons that domestic violence perpetuates is because victims are afraid to speak up. People are afraid to speak up because relationships are lacking. Relationships are lacking because we are becoming increasingly limited with venues for building relationships. Relationships build trust. Trust allows people to speak up. People speaking up reduces crime. Reduced crime takes us out of crisis mode. Being out of crisis mode allows us to trust and to build relationships, which reduces crime. I ask that you be innovative and a leader in finding a way- I ask that you be innovative and a leader in finding a way to fuse the reduction of crime by building up community relationships. Golden Pin Lanes builds relationship. Consider local models like Antigone Books, who experienced a recent employee buyout, and longstanding co-op models like the Food Conspiracy Co-op. Consider the aquatics program. Tap into and build up the existing resources like Golden Pin Lanes to help create a happy, healthy community in the Miracle Mile area and to revitalize the Oracle area. I would like to invite you to Tuesdays for Tucson, tonight at La Cosina, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. to help end systemic domestic violence with myself, Al Perry, Church Inc. Tattoo Parlour, and the Tucson Quilt Project. I would also like to invite you to the monthly Walk a Mile at Jacobs Park, the first Saturday of each month beginning at 8:00 a.m. This month, we'll be recognizing a sixth-grade student for speaking up through the Tucson Zines Writing Challenge. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Felicia. Appreciate your time. Supervisor Miller?
This is regarding the news article that Mr. Bickel referenced about where he did a presentation and talked about how the bond money was going to be used, signs, stoplights, stripes, et cetera, et cetera. And in that article, I just wanted to talk about a real unfortunate statement that he made about me being mentally ill. And while it may be funny, and it may be denigrating, but I think it's real unfortunate that you use that terminology about anybody because of the fact that we just did a proclamation here this morning about helping people with mental illness and trying to take away the stigma. And continuing to do that, first of all, civility on top of that. You know, we need to treat each other with respect. We heard that over and over here this morning. And to make that kind of a statement, I think, is very unfortunate, and I think it's really sad when we actually had a proclamation here this morning. And people read that, and it does nothing for you. I can tell you that. People were very upset about it, and it isn't good for our community, and it isn't good for the conversation when we discuss things. You can disagree with me. I can disagree with you. But I don't think we have to call each other names and denigrate people with mental illness. Because, as the lady said earlier, all of us are impacted by people with in our families, in our community, who have mental illness. And we try to be charitable and actually reach out to them and help them instead of using that as a denigrating term against someone you disagree with. Thank you.
Okay. We have two items on executive session.
Move to convene an exec--
I have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We'll be back at the sound of the gavel.
I'd like to call back to order the October 2nd meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors for 2018. Counsel, please. We've been in executive session. Help us out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Executive session, item seven on the agenda involves a settlement offer in Cutler versus Pima County at all. United States District Court case number 18CV00383FRZ. County Attorney's Office recommends proceeding as discussed in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number seven as directed in executive session by the county attorney.
Second.
So your motion is to accept the county attorney's recommendation?
Yes, as directed by the county attorney.
All right. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We'll run to item number two on the addendum.
Thank you.
Counsel, please.
Mr. Chairman, executive session, item two on the addendum involves a proposed settlement of a claim filed April 10, 2018 by Gail Nayer. Under the terms of the proposed settlement, Pima County would pay $142,000 to fully resolve the claim. County Administrator and County Attorney's Office recommend approval of the proposed settlement.
Move the county attorney and county administrator's recommendation.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the county attorney's recommendation. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We'll run to item three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Executive session, item three on the addendum involves a possible lawsuit on behalf of Pima County for damages arising out of the opioid crisis. County Attorney's Office seeks direction on whether the board wishes to authorize filing of such a suit, which would be handled by outside counsel in coordination with the county attorney's office. The county administrator recommends authorizing filing of a lawsuit.
Move the county administrator's recommendation.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the county administrator's recommendation. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Well, the dashing figure of Hank Atha has arrived, so I just wanted to make a note of that. I hadn't seen him walk in the room like that in several years, and you look just like always, Hank. So that's good. Positive. Very good. We're going to move to item five on the addendum, open meeting law complaint. I'm going to ask counsel to make some comments before we hear this item because we did receive a privileged communication that involved aspects of this discussion, so I'd ask the county attorney to give us some advice here. Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, there was an attorney-client privileged communication last Thursday, I think it was, and the board's discussion with respect to this item should not include any content from that communication without the board voting to waive the attorney-client privilege. So, well, I think the agenda item's appropriate. The board members need to be careful not to discuss anything that was in that communication without the board voting to waive privilege. The board could also vote at any time to go back into executive session to have discussion on that if it wishes to do so.
Supervisor Valdez, I know this is Supervisor Miller's issue, and we'll get to you absolutely in a moment, but Supervisor Valdez, please.
Mr. Chairman, my only real concern is, yes, we do have the ability to go into executive session at this point in time. The only issue then is that we have to limit our discussion. I had a discussion with our counsel to just the retention of outside counsel as opposed to the general advice. I would just certainly ask if maybe we could do it so that there was an executive session scheduled at a future board meeting and then have this on the agenda so that we can have full advice from our counsel as opposed to having them only specific to this specific item.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, could we reconvene in executive session? I make a motion to convene an executive session now to address this item so that we can come out and vote on it because time is of the essence. There's a required response within a certain timeframe.
Do I second to that motion? Hearing none. Supervisor Miller?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as you know, that a open meeting law complaint has been filed against certain members of the board. I have been asked by the Attorney General to respond to that complaint, and I do have information. I do have documentation. I do have testimony to provide, and as a result of that, I would like to retain outside counsel as the county attorney. I'm not sure if representing all of the members because we're in somewhat of an adversarial position, and I don't think one attorney can represent all of us, so I am requesting to meet with outside counsel so that I may respond to the Attorney General's office on this complaint.
Point of information. Supervisor Valdez.
Mr. Chairman, my point of information is this. I don't believe that any of the five of us can use the county attorney on this matter, but I show deference to our counsel if I'm wrong on that.
Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Valdez, that's correct. We cannot represent any individual board member with respect to this matter.
So is each individual board member, I guess no one else has requested outside counsel at this time. I am requesting that the board approve, and I make a motion that the board approve my request to retain outside counsel in order to formulate my response and turn it over to the Attorney General.
Do I second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Any further discussion? If not, okay, we're going to move on. We're on Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards. Item eight on the regular agenda, Flood Plane Management Plan Resolution 2018-FC6.
Move the item.
Second. Motion in a second to approve item six. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if nobody has any objection, I'll move items nine, 10, and 11 under flood control.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to divide the question and vote on 10 and 11 separately, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move item nine.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve item nine. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move item 10.
Second. Motion in a second to approve item 10. Supervisor Miller?
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, this park is being transferred. First of all, there's a direct select contract on doing this contract, which is design engineering services for sinkholes, erosion, and irrigation, installing new irrigation, water harvesting basins, seeding and planting. I wonder why we're doing a direct select contract. It seems there should be a lot of contractors available in the community versus competitive bidding. That was the first question I had.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, direct select is a consultant selection. It's not a contract. This is to design the actual remedial measures that are necessary for bank protection in park that was developed and built by a developer for the city of Tucson. When we agreed to take over the system, the flood control district, we excluded this until the repairs would be made by others, and in the negotiations with the city, it was agreed that we would do the design of the remedial measures and the city would actually pay for them.
And the second question I have is, why is this park being transferred to the flood control district versus putting it under the parks department?
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, the River Park System is basically the responsibility of the flood control district as opposed to parks. The flood control district in The flood control district in the Federal Clean Water Act, Section 404, as a measure of remediation or mitigation, the county was required to put in river parks when we, in fact, stabilized banks with soil cement, so therefore it's a flood control district obligation. The flood control district then contracts with parks to actually do the actual physical maintenance of the park itself.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Objections?
I object.
One objection noted for Supervisor Miller. We're on to item 11.
I'll move the item.
Second, we have a motion in a second to approve item 11. Supervisor Miller.
Yeah, this is an IGA for flood control project services, and one of the things that bothered me in the purpose is to provide and perform research and use third-party consultants, individuals, on a case-by-case basis. It's for 600, or excuse me, $750,000, a five-year agreement, and I understand this is coming from the flood control levy, but it concerns me that we're contracting with the University of Arizona to do research. Number one, do we not have employees in the flood control department who can perform these services? And, you know, that we're, the U of A is gonna have the right to go out and use third-party providers concerns me.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, I can probably let Flood Control District Director respond, but I think it's expertise in a number of specific areas that are related to the Flood Control District that it is more economical to basically contract with specialists as opposed to hire those specialists and have them on staff. And in addition, this is also, you know, part of the process of using people in internships to, you know, gain ultimately employment with the county. So Suzanne?
Supervisor Miller, Board of Supervisors, excuse me, I didn't have anything to drink, so I'm water. The type of work and research they would do, I can use as an example this hurricane weather system that moved through. The university has an atmospheric model that is used by a number of, like Maricopa County, it is used by a number of the utilities to monitor more specifically how these large systems move in, so it's a refinement. Do we run our own flood alert system? Yes, but we don't have the capacity to get involved in this kind of research of monitoring and predicting where storms will go. Other things that we might wanna do with the university, they have helped us with some design on what is the scour along piers at bridges, based on their information, ADOT accepted their study and their finding, and it has saved us quite a bit of money when it came to construction of bridges. So it's that kind of research, it's a little bit beyond what my staff can do. We do a lot of internal modeling, I'm very proud of the professionalism, but sometimes you need someone that is, has a specific expertise, something that goes beyond what our staff has. I also like to put, point out, these are not to exceed limits, so in a given year, we might not even request any work, but I know in the coming year, we're going to have them doing floodplain and weather model. It'll be the first time that somebody's modeling actually storms and the watershed response at the same time.
Okay. Mike, I have another concern, is that you have other uses for this IGA. It may also be used for other similar professional services that are mutually agreed upon by both parties. That concerns me, that this is kinda open-ended to be used, not, I don't think there's a real specific in educating and hiring interns. Obviously, a good thing to get people trained on real-world experiences, but I don't think that is the role of the county, and I just am concerned about them being able to use third parties on a case-by-case basis, as approved by directors, and I think it needs to be more clearly defined. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Objections? One objection noted for Supervisor Miller, motion carries, Board of One. We're on to Library District Board, item 12 and 13.
I'll move both items.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to the consent calendar. Chair would like to remove item eight for individual discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove items one and three for individual discussion and vote.
One and three, very well. I'd move the remainder of consent.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item one, community services.
I'll move the item.
Training, second. Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, on this contract, the concern I have, and it's the same if we could discuss both items one and three at the same time, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Fine, I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll move items one and three.
Very well, I'll second it.
Okay. The concern I have with this, they're changing their name, that's fine, but they have spent administrative funds, but they did not report any outcomes, and as part of the monitoring process, they stated that the outcomes were not part of the scope of the work, but if you look at the contract on page three, section 4.21, it states that the subrecipient of this contract must maintain, and I'm quoting, "a monthly average caseload of 32 active participants," and so my concern is that we're continuing this contract, but we're not meeting the required participant outcomes. So I'd like to get a response to that, if there's any corrective action going forward on this, because it is, it was not addressed in the background material.
And then item three?
Okay. Mr. Huckleberry, or you wanna go to?
Ms. Lesher.
Ms. Lesher?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, I'm afraid I don't have that answer, and I'll be happy to get back to you. I'm assuming, I only am aware of item one, not item three. We have a longstanding relationship with Dorothy Cretin Associates and DK Advocates, but I do not have in front of me the specific monthly reports or what you're looking for. I'm happy to provide that for you.
I'm sorry, I did mix item one and three together, they were two different, it was one and two, but yeah, so as a result of that, I'd move the, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I guess we'd have to withdraw the motion to do it.
No, you can do a substitute.
But you would, okay, I'd like to make a substitute motion to continue consent item number one until we get clarification on this item.
Second, so motion in a second to continue item one until we receive some more information on it?
We need a time cert, what's the next board meeting?
Next meeting.
Next, next board meeting, it'd be fine. You can do that, Ms. Lesher?
Certainly. And is it just item one or item two? Item two.
It was item one where this contract was addressed, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just recognize that you did vote in the affirmative on item number two.
Item number three.
No, you voted in the affirmative on item number two.
Item number two, yes.
Because I moved the remainder of the consent.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want a clarification on this.
Very good, I just wanted you to feel comfortable with that.
Mr. Chairman, I-
Item three, I guess.
I'll move item three.
Okay, second?
Mr. Chairman, my concern on this one is that we're purchasing these, what is it, three, four trailer-mounted patching trailers to be able to go out and repair potholes, and it's close to $300,000. The question is, have we ever considered outsourcing this? Has there an analysis been done in comparing whether we outsource this to an outside company versus doing it internally?
Mr. Huckleberry?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, probably not in the last 10 years, and so I think that the issue is, is, and obviously, you can contract for it, but I believe in recent history, we've basically done it with internal staff that have been basically assigned, and there's been a significant shift, I think, just in the last couple of years to increase pavement repair and patching. That requires this additional equipment, and I know that probably Carmine and Anna can fill in the details with regard to the additional efforts.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, yes, through our resident organization, we increased the number of crews to do the pothole repair, since that was the number-one service request we get from the public. We increased the number of crews with the staff, we just reassigned crews to do pothole patching, and with that, we found, we have five patch trucks that we currently use, but by increasing the number of crews, we needed more equipment, and we looked to what the city of Tucson was using, and instead of using the standalone patch truck, they use these patch, injection patch trailers, and we watched how they used them, and it uses chips and oil, which is the materials that we have in the yard, and can easily load the trailers, and use the dump trucks to go out and increase our service for our pothole patching.
Okay, I guess really my-
Excuse me, Supervisor Miller, just for the record, that was Ms. Olivares responding to that. If you'd please ask for the floor next time you wanna speak on items like that, it's helpful for the record, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Miller, please.
My question isn't whether these are justified for internal, my question was, have we ever considered or done a cost analysis to see if it would be more cost-effective to do this with an outside contractor versus internal and purchasing this equipment, which I assume you'll now have to maintain, store, et cetera? Have you ever done that?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board?
Please.
No, we have not done that analysis.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and under the, like I said, we've done it about 10, 15 years ago, and-
And what were the results?
And a clear result was that it's more cost-effective to do it internally than externally, and it's more cost-effective to do major pavement repair, sealing, major road overlays, mill and construction through contracts. And that's just, and I think if you look at the models of every transportation agency in the state, whether it be a city or even the state, they're what we call emergency patch, pothole repair is always done by internal staff, it's basically on-call 24/7.
Okay, all right. I think because it is on-call and 24/7, I just, you know, I will go ahead and support this, I'd just like to see maybe, you know, some sort of an analysis on this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item eight on the addendum. This is a grant to the sheriff's office, the Department of Public Safety at the state of Arizona. There was no background information submitted with this item. We did get a report this morning at 6:30 in the morning, but that was not timely, and so I'd like to just continue this item to our next board meeting.
If that's in form of the motion, I'll second it.
Yes. There, we have a motion and a second, discussion? Mr. Christie, please, or Supervisor Christie.
Is this a timely issue that's gonna be required from a timeframe by the, by the grantor to the sheriff?
We have a member of the sheriff's office here, sir.
The grant goes back to July 1, it's for fiscal year 19. Based upon our past usage of this grant, we could, even if this is continued to another board meeting, we will probably be able to take advantage of the funding that this provides through the rest of the fiscal year.
Very good.
So at this particular point, extending it to the next meeting will have no negative effect on the grant or the recipients or the grantor?
I don't think it'll have a negative impact, sir.
Are we late submitting it?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We're not late submitting it, the application is, this is the agreement to accept the funds, sir. The problem is, is that this comes from the state, and it usually comes in late September, early October, and it's been submitted for your approval as soon as possible.
Okay, that's fine. Any objections?
No objections, just a question, yeah. Did this go through our grants administration?
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes.
Good question.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Bronson, no, it hasn't, because this is one of these continuing state grants, comes, get 'em, is it's, and it, the amount is never known, because it's a last-minute negotiation, and it always comes in late, and it's not the sheriff's fault, it's coming through the state.
Because of the state.
And it's that whole process the state uses that is really pretty unpredictable.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Further discussion? Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so that completes consent calendar. Item 15, clerk of the board, petition for relief of taxes.
Move the item.
Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 16, Pima County Fairgrounds, Southwest Fair Commission Capital Improvement Project 2018-19.
Move the item.
Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item 17 is a final plat with assurances.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to hearings, items 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. I'll go ahead and move those items and close the public hearing. Motion in a second to close the public hearing and approves items 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 23, which is a zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one in the audience that wishes to address us on this item, move to close public hearing and approve ordinance number 2018-27.
Motion in a second to approve ordinance 2018-27, case number P18RZ00002, and close public hearing. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to the addendum. Item six is clerk of the board, petitions for redemption of property tax exemption waiver.
Move the item.
Motion in a second, discussion, my was the second. Objections, hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if anyone wishes to divide the question, I will move item seven, finance and risk management, item eight for the recorder, and item nine for the treasurer.
Motion in a second to approve items seven, eight, and nine on the addendum. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to procurement. Item 10 is an award, amendment of an award, master agreement, numbers MAPO 14313, MAPO 14314, and MAPO 14315.
Move the item.
I have a motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 11, which is also an amendment of award, master agreement, MAPO 1876.
Move the item.
Second, motion in a second, discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
This, this contract was awarded some time ago, I don't have the exact date, but it was awarded, and now the reason that this is being amended by $30,000 is that the, it appears the contractor wants to pay the hourly rate increases due to the mandated living wage increase of 2.65%. That, is that legal for them to come back and do that, to amend it for wage increases? Because to me, it seems that when you do the competitive bid, it gives an unfair advantage to somebody that can come back later requesting wage increases and amending the contract after the fact.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, generally wages and wage increases that are beyond the control of the contractor are passed along in the- the control of the contractor are passed along in the contract, such as the state minimum wage law, et cetera.
So this is.
So it is a pass-through.
So we are typically, we do this, and we've never had a challenge from anybody coming back and saying that we awarded the contract and then later gave that raise.
Correct, because the contract's awarded based on certain premises and the things that occur in particularly mandated minimum wages that are beyond the control of the contractor are pass-through expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. I'll move the remainder of the addendum. Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We'll adjourn this meeting of the October 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Board of Supervisors without objection.